Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. I appreciate that. First of all, let me say we are very honored to host this evening's board meeting. Ms. Mitchell is right, our students have worked extremely hard. This is year two, so we are a Vision 2020 1.0 Enterprise Entrepreneurship School in our second year. Just know that this focus has really changed the culture here at Westwood School. Changed the culture in several different ways. First of all, it has added to our academic success in many ways. It has also become a part of who we are. So if you look up here, you notice one thing we do every Tuesday, we do a bowtie Tuesday here at Westwood. Our boys and our girls really get excited. We are young professionals. We take pride in our appearance, how we look, how we conduct ourselves, and our presentation. Also, our sixth graders wear blazers every day. Some of our sixth graders who are here, can you please stand? Have a s- thank you. Monday through Thursday. Friday, of course, is our casual day. We don't wear blazers and we don't wear ties or bowties. Next year, our goal is to push it down to fourth grade, and the year after that, hopefully, we can be school-wide K to six. Believe it or not, we do have primary students, several of them, who wear blazers on their own. So they're excited, and they want to be sixth graders. They want to look and dress and act like sixth graders. We do some very exciting things here. Our students participate, our fifth graders, in what's called a Dolphin Tank, and our sixth graders in what's called a Shark Tank. So they go to the University of Cincinnati, our sixth graders, and they actually have to present to a panel. And the panel is tough, just like the Shark Tank that you see on TV. They present their products, and they're actually scored. And this evening, we actually have our Shark Tank winners, Bedazzled, they are going to do a short presentation for you, and we have our first runner-up, Heaven with Wigs for Kids. Very exciting. Just know that we are really trying to teach our students the relationship with money. The whole relationship of earning money, spending money, saving money. Ultimately, we want to send students to high school financially literate. That is the ultimate goal. So at this time, I would like for Bedazzled to come up. They are a little nervous, so please bear with them. They are going to present to you their Shark Tank.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Hi, my name is Camille T. Bridges, and I am the CEO of Bedazzled, and we are very excited to be here.
Hi, my name is Patsy Salam, the CFO of Bedazzled.
Hi, my name is Desiree Ryan, and I am the CMO of Bedazzled.
Camille, why do our logo fit our company?
Well, our logo fits our company because it gets a little shimmering shine.
This is our logo. This is our product that we make. It's made with cotton balls, food coloring, glitter, and a little shine. We create jar necklaces. We want to prove a point that children have to buy overpriced jewelry just to look good. Like, come on. Some of our bottles will be inspired by movies, places, and people, such as Disney characters, and many more. We want to get sold by big retailers like Justice, Claire's, etc.
About us, we make jar necklaces. We want to inspire other children like us to go out and follow their dreams. We are very energetic and talented children.
Our target customers are girls and boys aged eight and up. We picked this age group in junior because everyone needs a little dazzle once in a lifetime. Our product is safe because we use natural materials.
Our startup cost is less than $20. Here is a list of our materials and costs. Our total cost is $17.50.
Here is our cost per unit. The total unit cost is $2.42. This is what it costs if you buy one of our jar necklaces at small and one large.
Advertisement, we will advertise using flyers, buttons, and social media. When you become a usual member, you will get one jar necklace free.
Jewelry always fits.
This is our commercial.
We know that our business is successful because we get good feedback from customers, and we also want our business to grow.
We will also have a survey on Etsy. We're working on pulling it up.
Who our product will help? Parents, boys, and girls. The reason it will help these people, if you need a necklace like right now, just come to Bedazzled, and we'll have you all covered.
The future of Bedazzled. We will grow our business and hopefully get sold by big retailers. We will donate to multiple charities, as in Ronald McDonald House and SPCA. We chose SPCA because we feel that commercials aren't enough. We want other extensions out to get more money to these charities.
Thank you. Any questions?
We also will be working with mortar again, and we will have products at the pop-up shop. I know last spring, several of you all did come down to support Westwood and Rothenberg. So we plan to repeat that, and you will see several products. And our students are great salesmen and women, trust me. They do a good job. They go out in the neighborhood. They pull people in. They know how to sell their products. As I stated, it's a part of who we are. It's in our culture. Now, we have Heaven with Wigs for Kids.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Hello, my name is Heaven Jones, and I am the CEO of Wigs for Kids. I make wigs with hair accessories, hats, and hair clips. My target customers are kids with diseases and conditions that causes hair loss, such as cancer and alopecia. Oh, um, I am making this because my grandmother had cancer, and I have an idea of what it feels like to lose your hair. My startup cost will be $24.31. The material I will need is plain colored hats, eight-inch hair bundles, and yellow thread. Um, my sale price is $25, which will leave me with the cost of $18.41, which will lead me to the profit of $6.58. I am advertising my product through flyers and where the map, also my social workers at Children's Hospital. I will also start a social media page to get my product launched. Here's my commercial. Success. I will know my business is successful when I start getting customers and clientele. If my business is successful, I will donate money and wigs to Children's Hospital and St. Joseph's Hospital for kids who cannot afford my wigs. Thank you. Any questions?
Do your board members have questions or comments? I have one. How, um, how do you all decide what, um, what product you want to sell? I mean, what's your process for getting them out?
Um, like, what made me want to sell it?
I think I heard you say your grandmother.
Yes, she has cancer, and I have kind of have an idea how fierce it is to lose their hair, her, um, people's hair. And also, um, I have a special connection with Children's Hospital, and I go to this special event for kids, like, with diseases and conditions. And it caught, it is called, um, A Kid Again, and I always see kids with, um, no hair and stuff like that, so I just want to make wigs for them. Thank you.
So, before our young ladies leave, we wanted to take a minute. They do have some products for some of our board members. We'd like to show you what we have, and for several of our superintendents. So Ms. Wills, can you help them out and just tell them what is in our products?
So, um, hello, everyone. I'm Tiffany Wills. The, um, the board members, you all are going to get a box, and the administration over there as well are going to get a box, and some of the things that are going to be in it are placemats, like this. They're made as a collaborative effort between, um, Westwood School and Rothenberg Elementary as well. They're two Vision 2020 schools. They were asked of a place in Cincinnati that was important to them. They drew a picture, and we were able to, um, make a collage of those items from those students. You will also find magnets and coasters that say "Hope," "Love," "Peace," and some things like that, whichever one that you are lucky to receive. Um, we also have, um, a special company within our school. They're a small class of eight students, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders who have disabilities. We, they came up with that word, and they, uh, they, they think it's a cool word, and I do too. But last year, they won the Shark Tank, and so we're going to give you some, um, some giggly greetings from them. They're basically phrases, that funny things that they say every day, and that they put on a card. So when you see them, you'll get great joy out of those. Um, you will also get a magnet. So you have quite a few things in your, in your boxes, and we hope you enjoy them. Thank you.
So if you could bear with us for just a moment as they pass them out, they're really looking forward to getting these products to you. When we call your name, if you can raise your hand, just to let, help our young ladies out. Ms. Amott. Ms. Wagner. Ms. Mitchell. Ms. Broadnecks. Mr. Morawski. Mr. Messer. Ms. Bunty. Mr. Miles. Ms. Copeland Dansby. Mrs. Jones. Ms. Bolton. Mr. Timmons. And Ms. Bates. And we also have some products for our other administrators. Thank you all so much. We appreciate you supporting Westwood and supporting our young entrepreneurs. We hope you see them in the future in Forbes Magazine. Thank you.
Thank you to the students and the teachers who helped them pull this together, and Mr. Grant, we really appreciate it. In addition to that, we appreciate the brownies, the cookies, the chips, and everything else that's designed to make us fat, okay? That's okay. It tastes good. Okay, um, Superintendent Mitchell, we have three additional presentations on the One Alcohol Waiver Request for Creative and Performing Arts. Yes. Leanne Acklin, yes. Yes, please. Do the board members have any questions? Thank you, thank you. Our next presentation will be about graduation requirements. We have Assistant Superintendent Kiani Amat and Assistant Superintendent Usabeel Miles.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry, I'm very late, I forgot. Laura says you wish, okay? I'm supposed to talk a little bit about this group. And, and as we have in the past, we have what is called the Ohio Graduation Test. And that graduation test really was basically at a competency level of tenth grade. So the skills that were needed were skills that they needed in order to be a tenth grade. There were five subtests at that point in time. There was a reading test, a writing test, a social studies test, a science test, and a mathematics. And those students who took those tests had to pass those. You had to be proficient. The reason I say that, as Kiani comes up later, you'll hear the requirements have changed. We want to make sure all of our students are prepared for college, whether they go to college right out of high school, or whether they choose some time to go to college at a later date. We want them to have choices. One of the most powerful things in the world is to be able to have a choice, to be able to have opportunities, and that's what we're looking for. For graduation requirements for 2019, we'll talk about some supports that we're putting in place so that our students will be successful, and then pathways as we move forward after graduation. So, Ms. Amott?
Good evening. So we'll start with the class of 2019. These are the current requirements. Uh, it's broken down to two required areas. One is courses, where students must earn 20 credit hours in specific subjects. In addition, they must also must receive instruction in economics and financial literacy, and complete two semesters of fine arts. We do pretty well, um, in that area. The next is assessments. Um, students must meet one of the three pathways, one being end-of-course exams, um, and it's point-based, so they must receive 18 out of 35 points. If they, um, are on the industrial, um, industry credential pathways, they have to pass the work piece, um, test, or have a remediation fee score on the ACP or SAP. Mr. Miles talked specifically about the OGT. We are currently, um, in transition from the OGT to the end-of-course, um, assessment. And the cost... ...has been up and down because it's a new assessment, um, with that. So what the state has proposed in, um, our requiring is giving more kids options for graduation. So if they do not meet the assessment criteria, they can take, meet the requirement by two of these requirements. So some of this stuff, uh, we have in place, from college credit plus to AP, attendance rates, GPAs. Um, the two highlighted areas are areas that we thought we need to take advantage of. One being a capstone. Uh, CPS is very innovative. We already do capstones in grades four through 11. But as a graduation requirement, it has to take place in your 12th grade year. So that was an easy solve for us. What we decided to do, us, Justin Leach, our student manager, who's over capstone, put a project together for 12th grade, shared it with counselors, um, and principals. So that is now being offered at the 12th grade. But it was an easy solve because we have that place. So our expectations are, are really up there when we ask, when you see our Westwood students perform. That is exactly what we're looking for, doing research and presenting the information. So we just had to create something in the 12th grade. The other, it's not, okay, here we go. The other requirement that a student, uh, can access is calculating their hours for community service or work experience. Again, it has to take place in their 12th grade year, totaling 120 hours. I actually think this is a wonderful opportunity. A lot of our students are giving back to our, uh, community. A lot of our students, um, are working. So what we did was to develop a system where we are tracking those hours so we can share, uh, with the state if we're ever audited. So these are some, uh, supports that I've already, uh, spoke about in regards to, uh, that last graduation cap. There is, um, tracking those service hours. We also used our current dashboard system, because these are new requirements. Um, we worked with IT and our college manager to create a dashboard so we can track each student and their pathway, so we can make sure that those, uh, supports are in place. And lastly, we did, uh, mail-out communication to all families with the information so that they are aware of the new graduation requirements. Ms. Campbell will speak, um, to the class of 2019.
Good evening. So part of the transition plan, um, that we have put into place affects our junior class as well, those graduating in 2019. And, um, they have the same coursework that Ms. Amott spoke to, as well as having to demonstrate their knowledge on one of three of those requirements. So the Ohio State Test, the Industry Prudential, Workforce Readiness, or the College Junior Readiness Test. We are in this transition plan focusing on the Ohio State Test requirement, where our students must achieve 18, um, end-of-course points. And, um, we did a really deep dive into what, who in our junior class is not on track, and what, um, test they still need to take in the course point scheme. Specifically targeting math and ELO. So in, uh, the fall, we collaborated with principals, counselors, students, and families around, um, who was not on track and how we could deport them in their endeavors. We met with principals and counselors. We mailed communication, um, to families. We, um, began scheduling conversations with our students who'd receive access to preparation, um, this semester. Right now, we have, um, our juniors who were not on track to graduate in, um, various coaching opportunities and courses where they are, um, getting remediation around those skills and knowledge, and helping them to see that it's not too late, that they can learn deeply what they need to. Um, we provided targeted PD for teachers and, um, established an ongoing system of support, um, with teachers and building principals. So that's...
So we're getting an early start of our data collection. So as of March 16, thousand expected graduates of CPS have been accepted into a three E pathway. So March is really early, so we are really excited about that. Also, um, some other on-track measures here. We had 7,000, uh, college applications submitted, 1,100 FASFA forms completed, and a close, and close to $1 million secured in college funding. So we are really excited about that. We created a dashboard. Um, we're using Naviance where students are entering that data and working, uh, with their, um, counselors. So, uh, this summer, we are eager to come back to give you an update on that data. But we are tracking it. We are supporting students, communicating with families to ensure, uh, how Mr. Miles opened the presentation is to ensure that all of our students are fully prepared, um, and, and actively pursuing a career or a pathway of their choice. Uh, thank you, and any questions?
Just let me kind of review. I'm old-school, so we did the Madeline Hunter piece. Uh, so what we talked about earlier with the OGT, there were five tests with the air, and of course, there are seven, okay? So there's Algebra I, Geometry, two English tests, Social Studies. We talked about you needed, there's a possible of 35 points. Each test, you can get a possible of five. Three is proficient, okay? So then it's broken up into subgroups. Even of the 18 points that you need, you need at least four out of each subgroup. So you need, since there's two math tests...
So, you need, since there's two math tests, you need to at least get a two on both of those to get your four points, all right? We also, what we wanted to make sure, the superintendent and the board has made, wanted to make sure we are engaging community and make sure that parents know what's out there. So, um, Ms. Mott and I met with each principal. We've met with counselors. We've worked with each principal so that they are having graduation nights. So, they have brought parents in, whether they are eighteens, seen current seniors, or nineteen, current juniors, to go through the path of what they need in order to graduate, all right? So, with that, we even had one principal who kind of said, "You have this, this, and this? Is this child on track for graduation?" We are working with Scott, uh, who's part of our testing evaluation so that we know where students are at all times. So, we don't want someone to come at the last minute and say, "Oh, my child's not graduating." So, we are putting those things into place. We don't want to be a, a district known as a district of intervention because we want to be a district known as a destination district. But we are putting things into place for the, those students who have some hurdles in front of them. So, Ms. Mott has led with our curriculum department, has come up with some companion classes to work with those students, to look at the data, to see where they are currently, and putting in place, things into place so that they, our students will be successful. So, what we wanted to make sure is, one, people know where they stand. Two, based upon where they're standing, what action plan are we putting into place to help them? And then moving forward so that we're not a district of intervention. We're working with our kids at a very young age to make sure, okay, if they're in Algebra I, what do we really need to be working on in third grade so that they're prepared when they're, when they take that Algebra I test? So, just kind of wanted to recap for you.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Messer?
Thank you. That was a great overview, um, and education for me. So, thank you for that. Uh, and you mentioned the, uh, engagement of parents or guardians in the process, which I think is critical, but we all know sometimes that's difficult. What percentage of parents, guardians, are you able to engage, and what percentage of the students that you just haven't been able to engage somebody at that level?
Well, I, I think one thing that the board has pushed is doing it in different modes. So, yes, we have some parents who come. We have robocalls that are going out. We have letters that are being backpacked home. Uh, we have, so we're looking at different methods of, of getting people involved. One thing that, that we have discovered is we need to have kids talk to kids and kids talk to parents. So, through our advisory that we have and through Naviance, one of the assignments is for the child to sit with the parent, go through that piece. Where are they? So, we've done our best. I, I, I wouldn't be telling the truth if we're at a hundred percent, but I think what we have done is our due diligence of doing it in multiple modalities to get as many people involved as we possibly can. And really, our superintendent wanted us to have this, so when you're out there talking to people out in the public, you can talk about, yes, we need eighteen points. Here's how you do it. Here's the other pieces that you need in order to graduate, because I'm sure you will, as we get closer, you're going to be getting those phone calls.
And the other thing that I would like to add, with these new requirements, we got some of the changes as late as December from the state. So, it's a moving target. So, I think our team has been very responsive and really trying to get the, the word out as we get to information from the state.
So, I know Ms. Bates doesn't like paper, and part of the reason we didn't do it on paper because nineteen's probably going to change in two weeks, okay? So, the requirements, we put it on paper, two weeks from now, the requirements for nineteen could very possibly change. So, we just want to keep you informed of how that's going, uh, our, our, our staff, and what Laura has really told us. Let's not depend on a test to tell us whether or not we're successful or not. Because as we said, we had O G T, and before AIR, we had...
Next, the...
Yes. And now we have AIR. Now, we have AIR. There could be something else. So, really what we were looking for is what can we measure our students by in order to say that they are college-ready? So, we've met with folks. We're looking at A C T. We're looking at S A T to determine. That's kind of a standard. We want all of our students to have that opportunity to go to college.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you very much, and thanks for the presentation. Uh, I know that you brought this to us, uh, in, I think, Student Achievement Committee because of the initiative the superintendent and you, Mr. Miles, in charge of high schools, so to speak, uh, know that this is a critical time right now. And, and I know that part of this that you're doing is because these particular, uh, requirements have changed. And so, you're kind of not only doing it, but you're, it's a catch-up piece because the requirements have changed. But as we heard in, at least a couple of times in the Neighborhood Summit meeting that the, that the superintendent, uh, hosted, uh, this Saturday, parents really want individual plans for their kids. And obviously, junior year to senior year is too late to start, except for the fact that the requirements changed. So, and I know that part of the My Tomorrow Plan, or My Tomorrow Program, is indeed to have individual plans for each kid. And I know over the time, dating back to Mrs. Ronan and now through Superintendent Mitchell, we've added counselors at the high schools. We've added all sorts of, uh, more rigor and opportunities. But, um, wanted to, to say again that, ask again, do we have summer school for seventh and eighth graders?
We currently do. We're, we are looking, matter of fact, we are talking about what summer school, summer learning needs to look like. We're trying to get away from that term of summer school...
Sure.
Uh, because there's a connotation about summer school being babysitting or remediate- mediation. So, we're looking at summer learning. Now, there are some requirements that we have to have based upon if students have not received a certain score on their end-of-course exam, or they have not received a, a certain score on their third-grade reading guarantee, that we have to do some things. Uh, but we are continuing to look at that, uh, and look at data, uh, as far as where our students are, as far as the end-of-course exam. Yes, we do, we are looking at independent, um, plans for each of our students. But with that being said, we have twins and triplets. We, we've grouped kids together that have some of the same challenges, so they might have a plan that looks like the person next to them. But it's because that they have some of the same challenges, or because they have some of the great enhancements that we want to put together. With your equity piece, you've made it clear, it's not about intervention. It's about how many kids can we provide them with opportunities, whether or not they get this. Our superintendent told us the other day, whether or not those kids get that three on their A P exam, it's still far better for them to be exposed to that level of rigor so that they know what's expected of them, and it's also good for the teachers to see the level of rigor that's required for those students to go to college.
I appreciate that, and I, and I would like to see more about the summer learning for seventh and eighth graders, just because you really don't want to lose the kids and feel like they're so far behind by the time they're at ninth or the beginning of their tenth. So, that's of interest. And I'll say my end thing, I always say, to really be looking at the curriculum and the ins- nature of the instruction at four, five, and six. I still maintain that we are not yet doing the kinds of things we do or need to do that the suburbs are doing regarding four, five, and six. And I know there's been great strides in all of that, most recently, but it's, it's really an important piece of the academic, as well as the extracurricular piece. So, thank you, and hats off to you because this is so crucial.
Yes. I do have a question. I'm very curious. I'm sorry. Did you have your hand up? I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'll wait. You can go. Okay. Um, I'm very curious about how you match students, um, in, in the process for what determines, um, uh, credits, community service credit. How is that determined?
We wish we had a little more direction from the state. Uh, there, there was very little. We, what we did was, why reinvent the wheel? We had some schools already who were doing those types of things, so we basically just copied what they were doing. We came up with a form that we could use across the district, and, and that's how we moved forward. But some of our high schools had already had that in place, so we weren't going to reinvent the wheel. We took that and kept moving because as, as Ms. Mott stated, a lot of this came after the school had already begun. So, it's not like we had summer, or we had six months to plan. We got it. Ms. Mitchell said, "Hey, let's, let's start moving." We start moving. We start looking at things that we have. We have, like we said earlier, we have a lot of great things that are happening in the district. Let's pool those things together and let's share and move forward.
So, so my, my question, maybe a little more directly, is how do you determine, determine which students are able to do the community service as opposed to maybe a course or any interventions or whatever?
So, that's what I was going to share. The, um, those other requirements are only if they did not pass the assessment.
Gotcha.
So, that whole big list. So, counselors are meeting with students. So, some of it, if you have good attendance, you already have one of the, the areas. If you already meet the G P A, you already have the areas. So, that's why we created that dashboard, to really align what the students already achieved. Um, to piggyback on what Mr. Miles was saying, I'll use CARF as an example. They require community hours, so as far as setting up a systemic approach of, um, tracking that information, we use their current, um, system to share with other schools. But it's based on, if first, if you didn't receive a reading remediation score, or if you didn't pass your E O C, then we start looking at those other items and working with the counselors.
Okay.
So, the individual plan came, if you didn't have eighteen points, what are some other methods if we could get you to graduation?
Great. Okay. Ms. Bates?
Yes, uh, with regard to our, uh, implementation of our equity policy, where are we in ensuring that all the high schools have, uh, the same number of bells?
Uh, I, I think we had something that, uh, I know the superintendent has given to the board. We worked this year, uh, worked with all the high school principals to make sure that they, they all have the same instructional time. Um, and then we are also working with staffing so that they would all have at least a seven-period instructional day. So, there's some things that we have to work through those pieces, um, but that, that's what we've staffed for, for the eighteen, nineteen school year.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Copeland Dansby, followed by Mr. Morowski.
I probably don't really need a microphone. Um, thanks. Great information, as usual. So, we talked about, um, the importance of making sure that our families and our students know these requirements, and as we know, um, we probably can do better in that area. We can always do better in that area. People, you know, catch on a little late, or whatever the issues are. So, I'd like to make a couple of recommendations. Social media works very well, and, um, so does using our website and putting that checklist. And so, March is early, but it's not, so I think we can do some of those things now. Um, it would be a shame that folks don't know how serious this is, that this is a dramatic change, and that it is a moving target, and, um, and that they not be prepared. So, I, I just really want to encourage us, um, to also use our community learning centers to disseminate some of that information, because our kids are there, and they're participating before and after school and that, and I, I think that can help. Um, I also think you guys are being a little bit reserved with the great work that you're doing related to A C T and S A T prep, as well as college credit plus. Um, only because I've been up in, up close and personal with those opportunities over the past several years, do I know it's that it's really making a difference. And so, I would encourage us to continue to, to do those things, um, as well. And then this is an out-of-the-box question. What is a remediation score on an A C T or S A T? Do we know?
Is it nineteen from...
Twenty-one.
That's a remediation score?
There are two different ones.
And it depends on the subject area.
On the subject area.
Remediation-free score?
Yes.
Free. I'm trying to get to free. Okay. All right. Okay. Good. Keep up the good work. Thanks so much.
Mr. Morowski?
Thank you, Mr. Miles and Ms. Mott. Um, it's really, uh, awesome for me to hear, uh, about the summer learning with seventh and eighth grade. I know Mr. Miles knows, um, in a former life, it was my business to make sure kids experiencing homelessness had summer learning opportunities. And we know that summer learning loss is very real, and for kids, um, in lower-income situations, it's even more real. So, that was awesome to hear from me personally, um, and I appreciate all of the updates. A question that I have, and we talk in student achievement a lot, and I know Ms. Bolton and I are actually probably going to be talking this week about some of this, um, that the term student achievement, graduation rates, all this, it's good, and we have to hit these certain marks. But student learning is really what's important. I'll speak for at least myself, for me, and are the kids learning, and what does a CPS grad look like? And we talk about that a lot in the Student Achievement Committee. And I loved your line, uh, Mr. Miles, I wrote it down, not an intervention district, but a destination district. So, my question is, and I, and to the best of my knowledge, it doesn't exist, and I asked Ms. Bolton about it, about if there was a document, maybe even a one-pager, what does a CPS grad look like overall? Because we know learning, to your point, Bill, you're saying, we don't want to, um, we're not dependent on state measurements. We don't want, and I know that's big with you too, Ms. Mitchell, we don't want to be dependent on these state measurements. So, while we have to hit those, they are important in the real world. Um, in our world, what does a CPS grad look like? Is there a document that I could point to and show somebody and say, "This is what any kid, no matter where they go, will look like"?
We do. We have, um, competencies, um, and it's a roadmap, and it, it's from our My Tomorrow Initiative, so we'll make sure we get that to you.
Okay.
And it clearly, um, illustrates some of, um, the skills, characteristics...
Cool.
...that we want our students to have.
Awesome. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for your presentation. Our final presentation will be, uh, about an alcohol waiver request from Gamble Montessori High School Foundation. Mr. Tom Hay, Resource Coordinator for Gamble Montessori.
Good evening, and thank you. I'm also joined by Lanice Williams, who was one of our foundation members and one of our fine parents at Gamble Montessori. Yes, you are. You have received all of the material that we've provided. I just wanted to hit one or two quick highlights. Uh, our foundation, la- at the beginning of this year, awarded over seventy-six hundred dollars in scholarships for students to be able to participate, help them participate in our, in, our kinder, in field study experience. Uh, as a Title I school, uh, this money is essential for a number of our students and Um, also, we have met all of the district requirements and requests to be able to go forward with this, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point in the agenda, we'd like to discuss an update on the proposed F C Cincinnati development. The board has continued to engage, to learn more about the proposal from F C Cincinnati, to enter into a land agreement with Cincinnati Public Schools for the property where Stargill Stadium is located. It's been incredibly important to all of us on the board that we engage in these discussions in the most open and transparent manner. Last week, we were made aware of the most specific proposal from F C Cincinnati on their possible West End stadium site. We want to take an opportunity tonight to share that information with the public. We've asked our superintendent to provide a brief overview of the communications we've had with and about F C Cincinnati thus far. We've also asked our treasurer to provide some information to us this evening. So, at this point, I'd, um, like to turn it over to Superintendent Mitchell to give us a report.
So, this evening, I have the opportunity to present factual information and a timeline as things have developed in terms of a conversation between Cincinnati Public Schools, uh, the community, and F C Cincinnati. So, on January the twenty-second, uh, the Cincinnati School Board received a letter, um, from Jeff Birding, who is the president and general manager for F C Cincinnati. In his letter, he detailed, uh, the proposal around a twenty-one-seat stadium, um, a stadium that would be two hundred million dollars, that would be privately funded to, um, be able to build this stadium. And at that time, he announced to the board that, um, F C Cincinnati had an interest in the West End. At that time, in the letter, he also outlined the opportunity for the board to engage in a conversation and dialogue regarding F C Cincinnati. On January the twenty-fourth, our board president sent a letter to Mr. Jeff Birding, basically acknowledging receipt of the letter and welcoming the opportunity for a discussion or conversation. On January the... On January the thirty-first, during a publicly regularly-scheduled board meeting, the board took a very clear and appropriate stance to say that regarding this conversation, the board would hold community meetings, would hear from the public, and would ask Mr. Burden to come and provide a presentation for the public as well as the Cincinnati Board of Education. In addition, the board also indicated that they would issue a survey to be able to get information regarding the community in terms of their opinion regarding a stadium in the West End. On February the twelfth, Mr. Jeff Burden did come to a regularly-scheduled board meeting to make a presentation about a land agreement concept. Um, the proposal was to uh do a redevelopment of Stargill Stadium, to move it across the street where it currently was located, so that FC Cincinnati could take over the property where uh Stargill Stadium currently sits. On February the twelfth, on that same night, our CPS Athletic Manager, Josh Harden, did a extensive presentation outlining the current many uses of Stargill Stadium um that is actually done by multiple teams across the district, not just Taff High School. In addition, it's important to note that over forty people provided individual comments during the public hearing section of our meeting that evening. On February the twenty-first, Cincinnati Public Schools Board of Education held a community meeting at Taff IT Information High School, in which over fifty people were there to be able to provide individual comments. This was facilitated by an external facilitator, and the information was also captured by a graphic artist. On that same day, Cincinnati Public Schools did launch a public survey to gather information from the public regarding a stadium in the West End. These are just some pictures from uh the, those who attended that night. Um, to be very transparent, there were some comments that were in support of a stadium in the area, but then there were also comments um of people not in support of a stadium in that area in the West End. On February the twenty-seventh, ACIS, which stands for the Alliance for Community and Educational Success Met, that is a joint organization between the Board of Education and Cincinnati City's Education Innovation and Growth Committee. During that time, um, these, the proposal around the stadium being in um, in the West End where currently Stargill Stadium sits was discussed at that time. On February the twenty-eighth, the board directed the administration to sit down and have a conversation with uh FC President and General Manager Jeff Burden to do a review of a concept proposal. So it was a verbal conversation. And then on the twenty-eighth of February, the electronic survey was reopened for a total of approximately twenty-seven hundred individuals were able to give a response. On March the sixth, members of the Board of Education and the administration um attended a presentation that was provided by a nationally-recognized expert around community benefits agreements. This was important for the board to have this information on a national perspective as to how these agreements have been um operated and facilitating other communities across the United States. And then on March the seventh, Jeff Burden of FC Cincinnati provided a verbal overview of a proposal to Cincinnati Public Schools. On March the seventh, Cincinnati Public Schools Legal Counsel sent a letter to FC Cincinnati's Legal Counsel asking two very specific questions. And those two questions were really centered around FC's intent to pay taxes, and I'll read the exact question, as well as FC's intention to establish a community benefits agreement. So the first question is, is FC Cincinnati willing to financially compensate CPS for the property taxes that would be payable on the increased value of land and improvements comprising a new FC Cincinnati stadium? Question number two, the board has heard from many West End residents about concerns regarding the construction of a new stadium. Aside from the agreements contemplated by the Board of Education and the City of Cincinnati, does FC Cincinnati intend to enter into a community benefits agreement with representatives from the West End? On March the eighth, FC Cincinnati's Legal Counsel then sent a response to um Legal Counsel's letter that came from Cincinnati Public Schools. And I will read just a, a little bit of the content regarding that communication. FC has designed a benefits packets, package for Cincinnati Public Schools and its students worth in excess of twenty million dollars over ten years. First, FC Cincinnati proposes certain payments in lieu of taxes of twenty, uh seventy thousand dollars annually. So, just to be clear, since I did uh have a little misstep. FC Cincinnati proposes certain payments in lieu of taxes of seventy thousand dollars annually. So that answered the first question regarding taxes. The second question was around the um benefits agreement, community benefits agreement, and this is FC's response. FC Cincinnati is committed to improving the quality of life in the West End specifically and the city of Cincinnati generally. FC Cincinnati intends to enter into a legally-binding community benefits agreement with the city that is specifically de, designed to benefit the West End and be responsive to concerns raised by West End residents. On March the ninth, Cincinnati Public Schools Legal Counsel then sent a letter in response uh to FC's letter. And the letter basically said that Cincinnati Public Schools was disappointed at the response that we received. Um, to read verbatim, it says, "The board was very disappointed with FC's response." First, FC Cincinnati disclaimed any responsibility to make Cincinnati Public Schools whole for its share of property taxes payable on a newly-constructed stadium. FC Cincinnati's proposed payments of seventy thousand dollars per year is only a fraction of the property taxes that would be payable on a newly-constructed, constructed stadium without a tax exemption or abatement. In addition, FC Cincinnati's contemplation agreement with the city is not a substitute for a community benefits agreement with the community groups representing the West End. And the letter closes out with, "Without a more satisfactory response to the two issues above, however, the board will not proceed with considering this matter, matter further." On March the twelfth, Cincinnati Public Schools Chief Financial Officer did um go to FC today to actually have a meeting with the Chief Financial Officer um for FC to be able to review their financial statements. And on March the twelfth, um, FC did present to Cincinnati Public Schools Legal Counsel a revised proposal regarding taxes and a community benefits agreement. And I will just read just a couple of sections from that uh final letter that we have received as of today. FC Cincinnati proposes in uh twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty to provide um annual taxes to CPS um in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. In twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-six, uh, they proposed two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. In twenty-twenty-seven to twenty-thirty, they proposed five-hundred thousand dollars. And in twenty-thirty-two, FC has a range of um amounts that they are willing to give CPS should they be able to show a net profit. So I believe that that um is the timeline that concludes what has happened since January twenty-second, when Cincinnati Public Schools received its first written communication from Jeff Burden of FC Cincinnati. Thank you.
Okay, so I think for the purpose of comment or questions that we're going to ask Ms. Mitchell, she, she doesn't have to stand for that, because this might be a while. Okay, so do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I, I think um, you know, one thing about this is uh the discussion, I think, has definitely brought this new board together. Unfortunately, on a topic that's not specifically focused on education, but we've had a lot of heart-to-hearts, and I am very proud of the board that I sit with, so I'll say that first. Um, and I'll also say, on behalf of the community groups who engaged, while many of those community groups were uh completely uh against and opposed to the idea at first, what I personally saw is a willingness for them to come to center. And I'm not sure that we have seen that demonstrated in return uh on the part of the developer. So I do want to say thank you to the public for engaging with us and engaging as part of the entire process, uh, because it's frankly made it a lot easier for us, or for me personally, I'll say. Thank you.
Ms. Copeland Dansby?
Um, to our Treasurer Wagner, the time you spent in the office today, do you have any early findings or um learnings that you'd like to mention?
Yes, I spent um about an hour and a half with the CFO, Sarah Huber, um this afternoon. Um, and I did go back to my office, repair some slides, but I left my flash drive on my computer, so I don't have a presentation. But I do have my notes. Um, so I did a, an analysis on um property taxes. There are a lot of questions about um exemptions versus abatements, and what that would mean on a new stadium. And so for an estimated market value of a new stadium of two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, under a, if they were successful in getting a tax exemption, the district would get zero dollars in revenue. If they were to follow the tax abatement that the district has with the City of Cincinnati that was negotiated in nineteen ninety-nine, the district would receive approximately two million dollars a year in pilot payments, which are means um payment in lieu of taxes. Now, if the uh stadium was not exempt and not abated, the district would receive about two point eight million dollars a year, um, simply because of the way our millage falls out. Some of our levies are fixed sum, so we get the same value regardless of the property values. And the uh non-fixed sum or the fixed-rate levies would be about thirty-two mils, which calculates to about two-point-eight million dollars on a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar property. So comparative to um their offerings, they fall short. So um, in the review, financial review I did with Sarah um this afternoon, um, I did not look at their financial statements, but a five-year forecast and a proposal that they submitted to MLS. Um, and so she walked me through some of her assumptions, and she had very reasonable assumptions about co, uh revenues and costs going up. Um, in fiscal year seventeen and eighteen, seventeen, they finished the year with profit, and they're forecasting a profit from fiscal year eighteen. But they are projecting a deficit, an operating deficit in fiscal year nineteen um for several reasons. One is that would be the first-year implementation cost, startup cost, to get new ticketing sale software, a new recruiting software, um, new furniture for the stadium and, and whatnot. And then when they start with MLS, they will start sharing thirty-three percent of their ticket sales with MLS. So MLS collects ticket sales, and then they use that money to pay the soccer players their salaries and benefits. The um, I, I learned that professional soccer players actually are employees of MLS and not the teams. And so the money, the salary goes to, the teams are responsible, if I understood correctly, um, where they are allowed to have three players that um can play above the salary caps. And those increased, or the incremental salary does come out of the team budget. They're also projecting some fairly significant debt payments to begin in fiscal year nineteen, um, six-point-eight million dollars a year for the first two years, and then about eight million after, thereafter. And so they don't anticipate any uh positive net income over the next five years. They're anticipating some of their ticket sales to be relatively flat. Stadium is smaller, so they have less seat capacity. So they're going to have to increase their ticket sales, but they're trying to make them, they're not so big that they become, they shut out the families that want to be there. Um, the majority of their increased expenses are related to travel with the team. Um, if they go with MLS, they'll be traveling nationally, will have to fly to their games instead of now, regionally, they travel by bus um for the most part. Um, they're anticipating increase in designated player salaries and um significant marketing and promotions. I did a little bit of benchmarking with some of the similar districts, I'm sorry, similar um cities. And uh those would be comparing Orlando, Portland, Kansas City, and Columbus Crew. Um, three of those four teams do have positive revenues. And then the teams that have kind of significant annual losses um is because they have high paid, highly-paid designated players, such as Toronto has um Josie Altidore and Michael Bradley. And so um, some of the teams that were able to have, show profits because they're able to share their stadiums with foot, with their football teams. So um, which is not happening in Cincinnati, so that makes it a little bit different. They have a, some significant debt that they're taking on um in order to do that, so. That's about as much as we got through in an hour and a half.
That's enough.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I have a question regarding that, your update, um, Ms. Wagner. So if I'm understanding your information correctly, they're, they're stating that they're going to start out with a deficit, right? They're saying that they're not going to make any profit for, I don't know, how many years? Which means that they couldn't possibly pay what we're asking them to pay, which is our full share of taxes. Is that correct?
Right, so according to my scribbled notes, their operating, um, their net operating income would show positive in fiscal year twenty, but because of their debt and their, um, what they're anticipating is what they call an MLS capital call. So if the um MLS is operating in deficit, they ask the owner-investors from each of the teams to invest more money. So they're showing, they're anticipating that need over the next five years. So when you look at their total bottom line, they're not showing a uh profit um until after sometime twenty-four.
Okay.
We only looked at the first five years.
So in essence, what they're asking us is to kind of defer any type of payment on taxes because the people at the top are not making money? Is that, you know how I'm saying, you know what I'm saying? Okay.
And to pay for their debt.
Right, okay. Other questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the superintendent and the administration providing that timeline. And uh, I appreciate too, as a member, Messer said, uh, the board working together uh in trying as best we can to be as transparent um and forthright as we can during this process. I would like the sup, I would like the Treasurer to repeat at least three numbers, the numbers uh as they pertain to the tax that we would get if there was the abatement and if there were no abatements. And, and then also repeat the offer that was made, and maybe the superintendent can help with that, just so those numbers are there still at the top of our, our mind. The other piece is, is my understanding that, that um it, this, what we've just relayed in public is what is, is being relayed legally and in writing uh to uh FC. So we anticipate perhaps a response or not a response, but it's, we have made it be as, you to know as currently as we do, the status of this plan. And uh again, I appreciate the work that General Counsel has done, Treasurer has done, the Superintendent, and more particularly, I really appreciate uh the work that the community has done. But we've basically asked for two things, just to repeat. We asked for a tax payment on this new development, and we have asked that there be a real community benefits agreement with the community, not necessarily with the city of Cincinnati. Uh, so those have been the two areas where we have focused.
Okay, so to answer your question, under a tax-exempt status, we would receive nothing. Um, if the stadium was tax-abated under the city's agreement with us, we would receive about two million dollars a year in pilot payments. And so the uh FC Cincinnati would pay directly to the district. And so the FC Cincinnati would pay directly, the district directly. And if it were a property that was not exempt or not abated, we would receive about $2.8 million in property taxes that the Hamilton County Auditor would collect, just like any other taxpayer, and then pay us.
Thank you.
In terms of the second part of your question, as it relates, FC Cincinnati, their first proposal to CPS in terms of taxes, $70,000 a year in lieu of taxes. And then, so that was on March the 8th, and then they came back on the 12th, which outlines $100,000 years 2018 to 2020, $250,000 from 2021 through 2026, $500,000 for 2027, 2031. And then, should they receive a net profit in year 2032 and on, then they have it outlined as $500,000, $1.5, $2.5, $3.6, but these are all contingent upon a specific net profit that they would have to make.
Thank you very much, Superintendent.
Mr. Messer, and followed by Ms. Bates.
I just wanted to verify, the way they had anticipated not paying taxes was to do 30, 364-day leases with the Port Authority? Is that how that was proposed by them?
That's what I was told by our administration. I did not have that conversation with them, but that's what I heard, yes. So, and the Port Authority is tax-exempt in itself, but it says on their website that they cannot give tax-exempt status to a private company if their lease is over a greater than a year, so...
Ms. Bates?
Yes, I would like to ask the Treasurer to explain how the tax burden will be distributed with and without, just kind of, you know, kind of on a very high level. I know that, and maybe, maybe the public isn't aware of this, but it probably seems like we have a levy on the ballot every year. Well, over the next three years, we are going to have renewals on the ballot every year, so it's, I think this is especially pertinent because we want to make sure that the tax burden is spread evenly, and I know that our Treasurer can explain that in a way that you would be able to see that more clearly.
So the district has two, three types of levies. One is bond levy, which raises money to pay debt on the facility master plan that we did many years ago. The other two types of levies are fixed-sum levies and fixed-rate levies. Fixed-sum levies raise the same value, for example, the last levy that we just renewed was a $51 million levy. So we receive $51 million a year regardless of the property value. So when the properties go up, the cost of the taxpayers, the millage goes down. And then on the fixed rate, it's, we do get benefit on increased values every time they do an appraisal or a triennial reappraisal or a sextennial appraisal. And so when new construction comes up, we do get the benefit of having new construction. The point Mrs. Bates is, would like me to make is that on the fixed-sum levies, the more properties that are part of that numerator lessen the tax burden to individuals. So as the values go up, the less people have to pay to raise the same value. Does that make sense? Okay.
Mr. Morosky.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Ms. Wagner and Superintendent Mitchell. I just wanted to add one more thing about the proposals that were made to us, and I also want to echo what Ms. Bolton and Mr. Messer said. This has been as tumultuous at times as it has been. I'm really proud how well we've all worked together, and I'm really proud of how well the communities come out to help support us in our work and let us know what is important to the community of the West End and the greater Cincinnati community in regarding how we can deal with FC Cincinnati and ask for what people are asking for. One of the other pieces that they had included was, what was it called? Education benefits agreement. And I think of it in terms as a former nonprofit executive director of Unrestricted Cash, which tax dollars essentially are in restricted dollars for programs. We know how to spend public dollars wisely on the, for the benefit of kids. You've heard it tonight from Mr. Miles and Ms. Amott. And so essentially what I think we're also asking is that, these things are nice, and hopefully if this went forward, or if FC Cincinnati, wherever they are, would still engage with us, we're more interested though in the tax revenue coming into CPS so that we can then spend it on programs that we know will benefit kids. So that was just the only other piece I wanted to add that had been included in some of the letters between us.
Ms. Copeland-Dansby.
In the response that was received today or the other day, is there any detail about a community benefits agreement that involves and supports the community?
So, the detail that was provided in the last letter, which is a letter that we received today, FC Cincinnati is engaging with stakeholders in the West End, and on the basis of these negotiations will resort in a legally binding community benefits agreement with the City of Cincinnati. West End Community Council and Ohio Nonprofit Corporation will be a third-party beneficiary of the community benefits agreement. As a third-party beneficiary, the West End Community Council will have the ability to legally enforce the community benefits agreement. In addition, the community benefits agreement will establish a community advisory council to facilitate ongoing cooperation among the City of Cincinnati, the West End community, and the FC Cincinnati, and advise with respect to the implementation and enforcement of the agreement.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Messer.
I think the only comment to that is, you know, as we sought to understand, community benefits agreements are not something we maybe have done the best here in Cincinnati as we've done development and repopulation of our urban core, et cetera. So we sought input from an expert, and I think in looking at some of the case studies, if you go to the website or if you even Google "community benefits agreements," A, it's not primarily with the city. You can have administration changes, you could have administrations decide, hey, well, we're not going to enforce that. And as much as I'm a proponent of the work that community councils do, there's also other groups that are stakeholder groups that have to be included. So I think that is something that we will want to make sure is top of mind, that it shouldn't be directly with the city, and it shouldn't be with one entity in the neighborhood that not only, and organizations and groups within West End, but right next door, less than a half a block, or even, I guess it's two lanes of Victory, I mean Columbia, Central Parkway. Trying to get my weight here today. Central Parkway is over the Rhine, and it's equally affecting that neighborhood as well.
Ms. Copeland-Dansby.
Well, in a lot of our conversations, we have as a board talked about our jurisdiction and what we're responsible for. So I, as a board member, am responsible for the education of children. I can't be responsible for things that happen in the realm of the city. And so, you know, we haven't talked about the other benefits that have education benefits agreement is probably something that is of more concern to me. Did you all have those conversations, either financially related or otherwise?
Yes, so, if you'd like for me to respond...
Go ahead, Ms. Superintendent Mitchell.
Yes. So, in the March 8th communication from the attorney from FC, it states that FC has designed a benefits package for CPS. It mentions the 70, it mentions in excess of $20 million over 10 years, as well as the $70,000 annually. It talks about the rebuilding of a new Stargel Stadium. It also talks about improved educational and athletic experiences for students, parents, and faculty of the administration, as well as administration for Taft High School, as well as Hayes Porter Elementary. It also refers to outdoor high school athletics and the other teams that actually use Stargel Stadium. So those are the things that were mentioned in this letter that would make up the $20 million. In addition, it does mention that FC would give a free ticket to each child of Taft and Hayes and a parent to one of their games. It also references the sponsorship of academic and extracurricular programs for Taft, as well as for Hayes Porter.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments before we move on?
Just one point, one point of clarification, because Mr. Morosky is the one that's educated me on this, the $20 million over 10 years, $10 million of that is for the replacement of the stadium that would need to be ripped down. So we're looking really over 10 years, the $10 million rather than the $20 million, because we would have to replace Stargel Stadium.
Okay. I want to thank Superintendent Mitchell and Treasurer Wagner for these important updates to provide us all context on the communications we received and the good faith efforts and the conversations we've had as it pertains to FC Cincinnati's proposal. Our interest in these proposals is simple. We are here to represent to the best of our ability the interest of all of our Cincinnati Public School children. This includes ensuring that our students and families in the West End have their voices heard in this potential development. And it's critical as stewards of the public's money that we examine the details of this proposed deal closely and through the lens that again provides the best opportunity of all of our students. We have said throughout this process that the FC Cincinnati proposed land agreement is more than a real estate deal. This is about the people of the West End, most importantly, our students, and the environment that supports their educational development. And it's about the entire CPS district and how this proposed deal will ensure that taxpayers get a fair deal. We are committed to a good faith process. We have not made a decision, and we are not sure when we will make a decision. But when we do, it will involve public discussion and ultimately a public vote. So again, thank all the board members for their questions, Superintendent Mitchell and Treasurer Wagner, and all of the administration legal counsel for the work that you've done to provide us the information that we need. Okay. Okay, does anyone have any kudos? No kudos? Mrs. Bates? Do we have any retirements?
Yes. We have two retirements of our civil service personnel members, and they are Denise Davis and Marcus Manifield, and we congratulate them on their retirement and wish them well, thank them for their service to our students.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing of the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Mrs. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Our first speaker, Michelle Dillingham, followed by Marlena Broadfield.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to thank you for representing our children, our schools, our teachers, our parents, our district, for protecting CPS assets and for signing our interests and not be bamboozled by the narrative of trickle-down stadium economics. This is truly historic. I will echo, I am here tonight mainly with the Cincinnati Educational Justice Coalition, but I can tell you that there's a few messages that have poured into my phone from various coalitions, groups, and individuals that I want to reflect some thoughts. So hopefully you'll see me as sort of speaking on behalf of a bunch of people, not just myself. One is that I'll echo that the CBA should be with the community primarily and not with City Hall, as I already mentioned. Next, that the building of a new Stargel Stadium shouldn't be seen as a benefit as they need to do anyway to make the deal happen. But in general, you know, I saw elements of the proposed CBA in the Cincinnati Enquirer today on social media, and it is woefully inadequate due to its lack of details, lack of specificity, lack of enforceability, and it being rushed to the point where it's impossible for it to really be truly a CBA as CBAs are defined, like Brian Messer mentioned. But of course, most concerning is in large part the absence of their willingness to pay their full share of taxes, like most of us do in the city. So again, if FC were to pay their full taxes on the stadium, it's already been mentioned tonight that it would be, well, Treasurer mentioned, $2.8 million. So the figure of $70,000 is woefully inadequate. And I'm hearing this term being tossed around, an education benefit agreement, and I would just say to that, that I think that you and our senior administration and our teachers are smart enough to do what they need to get done with those dollars. So instead of tossing around some education benefit agreement that maybe includes free tickets to a FC game, let's just have them pay their fair share of taxes, because then we can properly fund our public schools. So, anyway, the whole process of an FC stadium being built in the West End, as you know, has been done, for the most part, hidden and apart from the community that it most affects. I've been to almost every public hearing on FC, and the lack of detail and real information is insulting. We are now, again, according to Jeff Burden in the press, 18 days before he wants a decision. Thank you again for your due diligence. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Broadfield, followed by Mr. Ralph Moon, followed by Julie Sellers.
Again, I really need to work on my handwriting because my ass needs to work field, so I apologize. I will work on that and get back to you. I want to talk about something a little different from soccer stadiums, and that is, well, I'll just give you a little story. I live about a mile and a half from here on a quiet cul-de-sac, and it's really nice. I love it. And we're in green township, but we're in CPS district, which I am super proud of. My next-door neighbor and I were having a conversation about, you know, why are the houses on our street, when they go up for sale, why are they sitting on the market so long? And she says to me, oh, it's because we're in Cincinnati Public School District and not Oak Hills. And, well, there was a very real part of me that wanted to say some unkind things, but since we have to share a street, I kept it to myself. But to me, it's reflective of a larger dismissal by our city of our schools and our students in the schools. As, you know, like, whoa, what do we, what do we do here? You know, we're just graduating a bunch of hoods and thugs. And I look at these people who are saying these things, and I'm like, you're talking about me. You're talking about my friends and people in my family when you say this. So what, the point of all this is that I want to ask you, as the board, and all the community members here, parents, students, let's be better cheerleaders for the district and our schools moving forward. And I see that that's happening. We keep having these awesome presentations from different schools. Let's keep doing that. Let's get that more out into the public and really celebrate what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ralph Moon, followed by Julie Sellers.
Terms of the stadium, after listening to the proposal, this sounds like another attempt, we're going to make billionaires out of people who want to make money and at the expense of the public. I thought when you went into business, that was a risk that you took. I didn't know that you wanted people to pay for the risk that you take, number one. Number two, if the people are serious about development, you can't put out an agreement which essentially shanghaing some of the people in the neighborhood by saying, I'm going to put some money over here and I'm going to let this select group of people over here have something to say about how the money gets developed. That's the same thing as putting the money in the pocket of somebody who I own. Let's get real here, okay? End the, end the subject on that point. I'd just like to say that I took a three-year appointment with the Ohio Retired Teachers Association. And the reason why I want to bring this up, we need retired teachers to join the Hamilton County Retired Teachers Association if you haven't joined, okay? My responsibility is, I've been asked to serve for three years because they've broken the state down into five areas. And one person in each area is a part of an eight-member board, which means I have a voice on the retired teachers initiative on things like collaborative agreements, cost of living, and all of that, which is very, very important because pensions and stuff like that are under attack. And it parallels the kind of things that we're talking about with the community because there seems to be a small group of people in this country that just want to market something off your back one way or another. So the things like, you know, collective bargaining agreements, things like that are under attack because there's a complete attack on union labor, union and things like that, and it affects the income and future income of people. So those are my two comments. Thank you so very much. If you are retired teachers, please join Hamilton County. And whatever concerns you may have, please echo them to me when it comes time to vote on proposals. And I vote at the behest of the people I represent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Sellers.
Good evening. I have two things that I would like to talk about tonight. First is, I want to say thank you for beginning a resolution in opposition to guns in schools. We must make sure that we have gun-free schools. And CFT's Executive Council has written a resolution that will be voted on this week. We hope that no matter what the state passes, CPS will continue to have gun-free zones. We strongly oppose the arming of teachers as means to end gun violence in schools. This is not anything that should be accepted at any school in this country, but I hope that this school board will never allow that to happen in CPS. And secondly, I would like to talk about the tax abatements. I'm glad that you are taking the stand that you're taking and that you refused that piddly amount of money that they offered. Right before I stepped into this meeting this evening, there was an article that was released by Jeff Burding, and he was still at that point talking about the $70,000. So that's what he still is offering to the public through the Enquirer. But there has been a growing percentage of abated properties. County Auditor Dusty Rhodes says that in the last 10 years, the percentage of tax-exempt properties in Hamilton County has grown from 10 to about 25 percent. Currently, council and the mayor give abatements to virtually all new construction and development, whether residential or commercial. In the last two years, council has granted or extended more than 110 tax-abatement projects. And since 1999, when the agreement was first written, the city does not make our schools whole as they promised. The district gets $5 million a year from the city to compensate for tax abatements. This has covered, this may have covered the abatements in 1999, but not after the epidemic of abatements in recent years. CPS loses revenue every year. The current value of abatements recently was calculated at the total of 215 abatement properties, is $749 million of abated properties. The school tax due on that would be about $16.5 million a year more than what we're currently getting. CPS is not being made whole on this. The district may still be having some abatement properties slipshod record keeping by the district and the city, and no one can produce a comprehensive list of abated properties to make sure that the district is even paid even the 20 percent due from property owners. Since no one is clear with how many abated properties we are already within the district boundaries, how can we grant more abatements? I believe that you can accept Mr. Burding's threat to make a decision in just 19 days as he did right before this meeting started. First, we have to have data, and I hope that the district looks at all of the data that is out there, and they need to be more transparent with their bookkeeping and how many abated properties there really are and how much we are really losing. The impact of a tax exemption for FC Cincinnati would be another $200 million in value to the abatement rolls. Currently, at least $749 million. This would increase the abatement projects in this city by 26 percent, which is based on what we already know about. So FC Cincinnati should pay their fair share. And what they were proposing, I am so thankful that you all said no to the $70,000 a year and the soccer program in 29 schools and rebuilding the stadium. He announced that he just wants to, to pay this amount, and it's not acceptable, and I'm glad that this board sees that. The Port Authority, real estate is generally tax exempt, but if the Port Authority leases the new stadium to FC Cincinnati, then the real estate taxes must also be paid. Do not agree to allowing FC just to pay $70,000 a year or whatever their new numbers are because the board needs to make, make the district call. But even with the perceived generosity of the second agreement, I still believe it's unacceptable. That is a quarter of a million-dollar project. And if they are only going to pay $4 million over the next 13 years, they want to, that is still less than what they would be paying, should be paying in two years. I think, I calculated out that for the 18 to 20 would be 300,000, 21 to 26, 1.2 million, and 27 to 31 would be 205 million, which is 400 million, or $4 million. That is not acceptable. $4 million of taxes over 13 years? It's not what they're saying that it's 20 million. They need to go back. If they can't afford to pay the taxes, then they can't afford the project. Somebody has to be able to pay. It should not be on the backs of the children in our schools today and the teachers who work in this district of giving up raises, paying more for health care, not having the supplies and resources that they need, the curriculum that they need, and everything else in order to have a successful school system. So I just hope that everybody on the board stands strong and go back to Jeff Burding and say, this still is not acceptable because $4 million over 13 years is not enough. We don't need a new stadium. We already have a stadium less than 10 years old. So thank you. I have one more thing. And from Craig Rosen, he wants to make sure that you hold strong, that they pay their fair share of taxes in Oakley too. If they, if they pull out from the West End, we still have to make sure that Oakley's paying their fair share. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to our speakers. We're going to move on to the next item. Ms. Bolton, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
Sure. I was doing it after you do it.
This is the waiver for alcohol use at School for Creative.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
This is the Chamber of that.
Yep.
Okay, yes, I certainly will. I'd like to make motion to pass, introduce a resolution to request a waiver for alcohol use at the School for the Creative and Performing Arts by the Cincinnati Chamber Orchestra. I submit as written and as was presented, and I look for a second and hope for passing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comment? Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Mr. Morosky, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
I would be honored. A resolution to request a waiver for alcohol use at the Rossed Estate located at 3737 Clifton Avenue, Cincinnati, Ohio 45220, and this is on behalf of the Gamble folks we heard from earlier. I present the resolution as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comment? Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Mrs. Bates, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
Well, I would like to withdraw the resolution this evening and re-refer it to Policy Committee during assignments. I've received some input as of late this afternoon regarding revisions. We also have some policies on the books regarding weapons. And I, and also I would want to see the CFT's resolution as well and try to get all of this, these policies in alignment with each other so we can present a united front. Because once we pass the resolution, it becomes policy and I'll refer it later on, but I see all kinds of sense into looking at it as soon as this Thursday, a Policy Committee and bringing it back on the 21st.
Thank you. Okay. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do. I have a very short report. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the death of one of our building engineers, Eric Washington. You'll see him in the superintendent's report. Just want to send our condolences to his family and also thank them for lending him to us for so many years. We truly valued his service in our district. The second thing is a bit of good news for the district. So the University of Virginia's Darden School of Business reached out to CPS after hearing about our peer leadership work as well as our My Tomorrow work and recommended that CPS apply for a youth activation summit that is being sponsored by Facebook, and we got it.
Oh, yay!
So a very small team of us comprised of myself and one other administrator who's been working with peer leadership as well as our two students will travel to Facebook in April, so we're very excited about that. We'll be working with other young people across the country as we learn more about how they can activate themselves within our schools and communities. So that's very exciting.
Thank you. Yep. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Report of the, I'm sorry, do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer? Shall moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have just one, just one suggestion, and again, I appreciate the additional pages in the front that help explain these funds to us and to the public as well. But on page two of the revised, well, I guess it still would be page two, I think, regarding the facilities and security and food, the funding source, let's see, B, Roman numeral two, letter B, it says PNC, P-card memo vendor. Just it would be good to have a footnote that says those things are itemized and are on record because it looks like it's a, the way it reads it, it looks like it's a P-card, which we do have to use. See what I'm saying? I just think, because it's a large amount, I just think that that would be useful if indeed that's what it is.
Sure, that's a great suggestion. Thank you. And just for the public's edification, every time a P-card is done and approved by the board, there's a requisition that outlines each specific line that gets charged and the values for that.
Thank you. And it would be great if the document sort of reflected that, especially when it's such a large amount. Thank you.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Okay, so given that page two, Roman numeral two, letter B, under the explanation, then Treasurer Wagner, are those charges for the months of April, May, and June? This, it's what Ms. Bolton is pointing out about the $149,000 spend?
Right. So our P-card users are required to encumber the funds before they spend them. So the, yes, so that the Facilities Department estimates a three-month spend ahead of time.
So it essentially isn't a one-month sum. It gives an explanation over three months?
The requisition is one-month sum, but it covers three months of expenses that they have outlined.
Right. Okay. I guess I, your question confused me because it clearly gives an explanation that it's over three months.
Right, but I think what she, Ms. Bolton, wanted was the types of expenses that we'll be covering.
Is there? Okay. Sort of the itemized. Thank you. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
Shall moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Okay, so under inquiries and updates, we, Mr. Morosky, you want to present for your first reading of your resolution?
I would, yes. And to echo Ms. Bates, if, after I do my first reading, of course, just so people understand how this works, you do a first reading, then you can talk about it, and then if you decide to pass in a policy, you can. So after reviewing Ms. Sellers' and CFT's document and OSBA and all that, I would very much like mine to be in consideration as well. So just so people know what the resolution says, it's a resolution in opposition to guns in schools, and it looks specifically at three bills making their way through Columbus, all three of which would make it easier to bring guns into schools. I won't bore you with all the wording, but whereas House Bill 228, if passed, would no longer require someone to retreat from a threat, commonly referred to as stay on your ground, whereas House Bill 233 allows people to carry concealed loaded handguns in schools and on college campuses. Despite opposition from school safety experts who know the policy is unsafe, the penalties for carrying a concealed weapon in areas posted as gun-free would be reduced from a felony to a misdemeanor. Passed the House last year and was introduced in the Senate in July of 2017. Whereas House Bill 201, which is currently in committee, would eliminate the required concealed carry weapon permit for adults 21 and older who are not barred by federal law and allows concealed carry of firearms without going through proper training or background checks. Whereas the American Federation of Teachers and the National Education Association, the nation's two largest teachers organizations oppose allowing guns in schools, therefore be it resolved since any public school board stands in opposition to any bill that makes it easier for someone to carry a gun into a school building.
Okay, so Mr. Morosky, that was your first reading. Is the plan to present that in for final resolution?
It would be after we discuss it in policy if that's appropriate this Thursday. Yeah, sure. Sure, yeah. Make one, one, one. Whereas the American Federation of Teachers and the National Education Association, the nation's two largest teachers organizations, oppose allowing guns in schools. Therefore, be it resolved, Cincinnati Public School Board stands in opposition to any bill that makes it easier for someone to carry a gun into a school building.
Okay, so, Mr. Morosky, that was your first reading. Is the plan to present that in for final resolution?
It would be after we discuss it in policy, if that's appropriate this Thursday. Yeah, sure. Sure, yeah, make one, one, one policy to rule them all, so to speak.
Okay, thank you. Inquiries and updates? I have a few. First one, City Council is sponsoring an open mic night for students on a future free from gun violence from 6:00 to 7:00 or 7:30. The board was invited. It was, it's March 20th. And if anyone wants to know, I believe there was an email that we received from PG Sidenfeld. Please respond if you're interested in attending that. Yes, Ms. Bates?
He mentioned that there's one spot on the dais for a board member, so can we determine who that would be? And, I mean, I mean, I don't think he intended all seven of us to be up there.
Right, right. Actually, I'd like to, I'd like to recommend Mr. Morosky. I'm sorry? Okay. Is there anybody who wants to be a part of the dais? March 20th? Okay, how about? How about, I mean?
I can go.
You want to be on the board? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right. All right. The second one is OSBA presentation, Randy Smith confirmed April 16th at 6:30. So, please put that on your calendars. And then April 4th is our next board retreat. So, yes, Ms. Bolton?
Is that pertaining to budget?
No, that's.
Because we have?
No, I don't, I'm not, I don't think it is. I looked at both of the calendars, the merged calendar and hours, and it says April 4th was open just for our board retreat.
When is the budget?
But we can double-check that. We can double-check it.
Please do, because.
Yes. Actually, that can, that'll be an assignment for administration. Can you let us know if that's the scheduled budget? Hearing, okay.
On the 4th, on the 16th, at what time did you say?
It's our regular business meeting, 6:30.
And Randy's going to do what?
He's presenting. This was an assignment that was made a month or so ago where we were asked to invite him to present just an overview of what the activities of OSBA are for 2018.
Oh, to present an overview of OSBA. Okay, and then my other question is, it does look like that board retreat is on April the 4th, and so I'm going to suggest that if we have it scheduled for April the 4th, we keep it April the 4th.
That's what the plan is, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, any assignments?
I have some updates.
Yes.
I didn't realize I needed to mention, and I should. Board members are reminded that on Thursday of this week, in our Marathon Day on the Ides of March, March 15th, we have the community conversation on later starts for high schools. And so, I believe it's going to be, I know it's going to be held at the Ed Center. It's at 6:00. And Marson Banquet Room. And so, your attendance would be requested. And I know Ms. Worley has done a good job of getting the word out and continues to do so, especially for student voice and also these advocates that we've been listening to for a year and a half regarding the science about that. So, if you can attend, that would be great. And then tomorrow evening, board members, there is a celebration and thank you at the Civic Garden Center for activities beyond the classroom. Is it a four to seven? Is that what I, a four to seven? And usually, they have Ollie's Trolley cater, so it's a pretty good festive event. So, mark your calendar for those two items particularly.
Thank you. Any other inquiries and updates? Assignments? So, we just, we just made one to check the calendar for us on that April, I mean, I'm sorry, the, yes, the April 4th date. Whether or not that's supposed to be a budget hearing, okay.
And also referring to Policy Committee this Thursday, the consideration of the policies regarding gun violence. Policies.
Okay, thank you.
And also to the.
And who is the assignment to the Policy Committee?
It's to the Policy Committee, but also to the administration to bring forward any, any policies with regard to the use of weapons and also how it's enumerated in the Code of Conduct.
Thank you.
And as a result of earlier discussion, administration is reminded that the Student Achievement Committee meeting will start at 2:00 instead of 2:30. And there'll be an agenda for tomorrow now based upon who's able to be there and not able to. So, we've had some moving targets on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
I'd like to make an assignment as a follow-up to our presentation today about graduation requirements. I would like to ask Ms. Worley and her team to please figure out how we might be able to post those requirements via social media and/or the website and a timeline related to that, because only you guys know what the best timeline should be. I'm just looking for a way to improve the process by which we inform people. And then if we could include anything related to CLCs with that, that'd be great as well. So, sort of like a dashboard or checklist or something like that. You guys are great in doing that, and I appreciate that.
Okay, other assignments? Now or Never? Having no other business before the board, I declare the meeting adjourned.
It's on the schedule. It's always been on.